Good afternoon. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of self-reflection. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. King?
Here.
Please dispense with the reading minutes. Third order, 3A, no business at this time. Fourth order, citizen participation. Not sure if we have anyone on the sign-in sheet. Allison, check.
No, there's no one.
There's no one on the sign-in sheet. Is there anyone that would like to speak before council? Fifth order, 5A motions. Mr. Smurl, do you have any motions or comments?
I do not at this time.
Mr. Schuster?
Other than saying Happy New Year to everyone here and at home, no comments at this time.
Dr. Rothschild?
No, I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Mr. McAndrew?
No, just I want to wish everybody here Happy New Year and thanks for coming.
And I too like to wish everyone a Happy New Year and a healthy 2024. I do have, there's good news and there's bad news. This first meeting is called the Cindy meeting, which is the wrap-up meeting from 2023, and the actual reorganization meeting doesn't begin until 1:00 p.m. I'm sorry to deliver this news, but unfortunately, that's the way that it's advertised. So there are actually two meetings. Cindy meeting advertised at noon, and the reorganization meeting was advertised at 1:00. So legally, we cannot begin that meeting until 1:00 p.m., and I apologize for any confusion on that.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, no business at this time. Eighth order, 8A, no business at this time. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Controller, will the council adopt a motion to the effect that the certificate be received and ordered filed and made a part of the minutes? I will now ask Judge Terrence J. Nealon to come forward and administer the oath of office to Mr. Murray for the elected office of city controller.
For everyone here, this is actually a recreation of a picture from four years ago. We've all grown about this tall. They've all gotten taller, and John and I have gotten older. John, if you put your left hand on the wire, I will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Murray...
I, John Murray.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
And I will discharge the duties of my office...
As controller for the city of Scranton...
As controller for the city of Scranton.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Murray.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not going to do any speeches, so...
Do I have a nice speech?
What do I do?
I just want...
I have to go first. I had the quadruple bypass, and we did all the same.
The bypass, I forget your ass. They can bypass this thing.
And continue to heal and feel better.
Thanks for looking forward.
You got it. Fortunately, we do have to wait till 1:00 for the actual reorganization meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Father Cyril Edwards.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good and gracious God, we ask your blessings on those who begin terms of service for the people of our city today. Fill them with wisdom, courage, justice, to lead us well. May they understand that offices of service are a privilege and a responsibility. May they take great care to see that the needs of the less fortunate are always a priority to them. May they know they turn to you in times of need when guidance is called for. We ask these prayers in your name.
In accordance with the Home Rule Charter of the City of Scranton, designating the first Monday of January as the day for city council to reorganize, I hereby call this 2024 reorganization meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
At this time, I ask that, as you are called to be sworn in, will the judges and elected officials please sign the documents when you are finished? Swearing in of city controller. I have before me the certificate of election of John Murray, city controller. Will the council adopt a motion to the effect that the certificate be received and ordered filed and made part of the minutes?
So moved.
On the question?
On the question, I think it's important to note that our county city controller was here earlier for the initial meeting at 12:00 noon. He recently had quadruple bypass surgery, so we had him sworn in at that time, and we told him we would approve him officially at our reorganization meeting, which is now. So that's why city controller John Murray is not here at this time. He was sworn in earlier today by Judge Terrence Nealon.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. Swearing in of city council persons. I have before me the certificates of election for Mr. Mark McAndrew, Dr. Jessica Rothschild, and Mr. Gerald Smurl as city council persons. Will the council adopt a motion to the effect that the certificates be received and ordered filed and made part of the minutes?
So moved.
Second. On the question?
On the question, I'd like to congratulate all three of my colleagues for being reelected. I think they've done an excellent job serving the city of Scranton, and I look very forward to working with them over the next two years.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. I will now ask Judge Terrence Gallagher to come forward and administer the oath of office to Mr. Mark McAndrew for the elected office of city council.
You can be back. Be back on the radio right here. Let me get some moss out here. Behind every good man is a better woman, so we're glad you're here today. Aye, Mark McAndrew?
Aye, Mark McAndrew.
Swear and affirm?
Swear and affirm.
I will support, obey, and defend...
I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
The Constitution of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
And I'll perform the duties and responsibilities of the position that I've been elected...
And I'll perform the duties, responsibilities of the position I've been elected...
As a member of the city of Scranton council...
As a member of the city of Scranton council...
With fidelity and integrity...
With fidelity and integrity...
To the best of my God, given ability...
To the best of my God, given ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations to you. Better.
I will now ask Judge Mary Walsh Dempsey to come forward and administer the oath of office to Dr. Jessica Rothschild for the elected office of city council.
Right hand up, please, and if you can, left hand. Repeat after me. I, Jessica Rothschild...
I, Jessica Rothschild.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge these duties...
And that I will discharge these duties...
Of my office...
Of my office.
As a Scranton city council member...
As a Scranton city council member.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
You're still sworn in? Congratulations.
I will now ask Judge Joanne Corbett to come forward and administer the oath of office to Mr. Gerald Smurl for the elected office of city council.
Congratulations, Councilman Smurl. Raise your right hand. And now, repeat after me. And now, this first day of January 2024...
And now, this first day of January 2024.
I, Gerald Smurl...
I, Gerald Smurl.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And I will do so within the laws of this Commonwealth...
And I will do so within the laws of this Commonwealth.
And according to the bylaws of this organization.
According to the bylaws of this organization.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I will now accept nominations for temporary chairperson. What is your pleasure?
I nominate Councilman Schuster to be appointed temporary chairperson.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. Mr. Schuster, will you please take over as temporary chairperson?
Thank you. I'll now call for a nomination for the permanent president of council for the ensuing two years.
I nominate Mr. Gerald Smurl as president of Scranton City Council.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
The motion is adopted, and I hereby declare that Councilman Smurl duly and legally elected president of Scranton City Council. I will now call for the nomination of the vice president of council for the ensuing two years.
I nominate Mr. Mark McAndrew as vice president of Scranton City Council.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
The motion is adopted, and I hereby declare that Councilman McAndrew duly and legally be elected vice president of Scranton City Council. I will now ask for the nomination for city clerk.
I nominate Frank Voldenberg, city clerk.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
The motion is adopted, and I hereby declare that Mr. Frank Voldenberg duly and legally be elected city clerk. At this point in time, I'd like to make a motion that the city council appoint Attorney Thomas J. Gobryd to the position of city council solicitor.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I just want to thank our former solicitor, who's sitting right there in front of me, for the fantastic work he's done for council over the past two years. And I wholeheartedly open and welcome Solicitor Gobryd to the new position.
I too would like to thank Attorney Sean Gallagher for his service over the past two years in working with council. He's done an excellent job. He's got big shoes to fill now, taking over for his dad as the magistrate over in West Scranton. I have no doubt he'll do an outstanding job, and I wish him nothing but the best in his new position. And I welcome Tom Gobryd, Attorney Tom Gobryd, who will now serve as our new city solicitor. And I know he will do an outstanding job, so we look forward to working with you, Tom, as well.
Also on the question, I'd like to thank Attorney Gallagher for his work here that he did on city council, and to wish him luck in his new position, and to wish his father luck as well in his future endeavors. And welcome, Mr. Gobryd.
Thank you to Attorney Sean Gallagher for your assistance and for your service to the city in the position of solicitor, and welcome to Attorney Tom Gobryd. We're happy to have you and look forward to working with you.
And I thank you, Attorney Gallagher, and I wish you all the luck in your new position. And thanks for all the help over this past year. And I also welcome Attorney Thomas Gobryd as our new attorney.
Swearing in of city council president. Frank, excuse me. I think we have to vote on that.
All those in favor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Swearing in of city council president.
I will now ask that Councilman Smurl to come forward to be sworn in as city council president by Judge Joanne Corbett.
I solemnly swear that I support, obey, and defend... The Constitution of this Commonwealth. And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
At this time, I'd now like to ask Councilman McAndrew to come forward to be sworn in as city council vice president.
I, Mark McAndrew, swear and affirm the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And I will perform my duties of my office, and I will perform my duties of my office. I will act as elected, elected vice president of the city council. Vice president of the city council with fidelity and integrity. With fidelity and integrity. With the best of my God. With the best of my God. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next is the swearing in of the city clerk, and I would like to ask Mr. Voldenberg to come forward to be sworn in as city clerk by Judge Joanne Corbett.
And now, this first day of January 24. I solemnly swear that I support, obey, and defend... The Constitution of the United States... And the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And that I will discharge the duties of my office... With fidelity. And I will do so within the laws of this Commonwealth. And according to the bylaws of this organization. With fidelity. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. I hope I do half as well as Bill King has done as council president this past year, and I thank him for all of his service. Congratulations to our vice president, Mark McAndrew.
Thank you. You as well, sir. Thank you.
All right, we begin. So I move that the rules of council be adopted by Resolution Number 1 of 2024.
No, not that.
We're now ready to consider the rules of procedure by which council will be governed during the next two years. What is your pleasure?
I move that the rules of council be adopted by Resolution Number 1 of 2024 as required by the Home Rule Charter.
Mr. Voldenberg, will you read Resolution Number 1 of 2024?
Resolution Number 1, 2024, adopting the rules and order of business of the Scranton City Council, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
On the question? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. The following will be the committee chairpersons for the next two years. Committee of Rules would be Mr. Smurl. On the Committee on Finance will be Mr. King. The Committee on Public Works will be Mr. Schuster. And the Committee on Public Safety will be Mr. McAndrew. And the Committee on Community Development will be Dr. Rothschild. The chairpersons for the subcommittees will be as follows. Pension review administration will be Mr. Smurl. Revenue taxes will be Mr. King. Intergovernmental relations will be Mr. Schuster. Board commissions and shared services will be Mr. McAndrew. And economic development will be Dr. Rothschild. Okay? I will now call on each council member for a few brief remarks. Mr. King, do you have any remarks at this time?
I actually have a list of all the things I was hoping to accomplish as president, but I think I'll refrain from going through that rather lengthy list. I will say this. We accomplished probably, I would say, 85% to 90% of the things that I was hoping to accomplish along with my colleagues on council over this past year. Maybe I'll, I think I'd rather do it at a formal meeting when all of our, the regulars are here. Everyone's been here long enough to have to go through this list. But I will say this. I think that we've made significant progress over the past two years in helping to move the city forward in a positive direction, and I'm really looking forward to a number of the projects that are going to occur over this next year, including nine projects at nine parks throughout the city of Scranton, Stormwater Project on East Mountain, Kaiser Valley, and actually, three other parts throughout the city. And as I said, there's a lot that we've accomplished as a team along with the administration, so I look forward to making a positive impact on our city and working with my colleagues collaboratively over the next two years to make the city an even better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any remarks at this time?
Just congratulations to everyone today, and I look forward to 2024. We do have a meeting tomorrow, so any comments I have, I guess I will save for tomorrow. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any comments or remarks at this time?
I do have a few remarks, and I just want to start off by thanking everyone for attending today and then sticking around for the second meeting. It means a lot. I'm really honored to have been... I'm really honored to have been reelected to Scranton City Council for a second term, and I'm excited about all the work that we can do over the next four years together. I want to thank Councilman King for his service as President of Council, and then congratulate Councilman Smurl and Councilman McAndrew as well for their elections and for their positions. So yeah, thank you again, and if anyone else wants to make remarks?
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any remarks at this time?
Yeah, I do. I want to congratulate my colleagues who just made it through the last election, and thank Mr. King for serving as president. I know it's a tough job. I'm well aware of it, but you handle it with fidelity, and I appreciate that. As for myself, after a decade of public service to the city I love, I am truly honored and humbled by the fact that the residents of Scranton still are still happy with my performance and have faith in me. And I'm very honored with that. And in addition to that, I've always voted in their best interest, and I've always been their voice. So I'll continue to do both. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. I would also like to thank everyone for coming today, and I would also like to thank our four... other four council members for having confidence in me and allowing me the privilege of being council president. It's my honor to serve the citizens of Scranton, and I hope to continue moving the city of Scranton in a positive direction. I never thought I would be on city council. Grew up with six brothers and sisters in really poor conditions, and would think that I would do this, let alone be chosen to be council president, which I am very, very proud of. I promise to do my absolute best serving as council president for the city of Scranton. I would also like to thank Judge Corbett, Judge Dempsey, Judge Nealon, and Judge Gallagher for coming in on a holiday and administering the oath of office to all of us. Thanks.
Mr. President, can I also thank our Father Cy Edwards for being here today? He's been very patient, too, so I appreciate him. He made the mistake of bumping into me at the line of tournament the other evening, so I was fortunate to recruit him once again to come in and swear us all and do the invocation of benediction, so thank you.
Thank you. Father Edwards, would you please come forward and again offer the benediction?
Thought Mr. King would say something about being at the Eagles game yesterday, which is a bad place to be if you're an Eagles fan like we are. But whatever. Good and gracious God, may all those who have taken oaths of office and continue to serve from previous terms of office realize that their oaths are an opportunity and an obligation to serve the good people of the city of Scranton. May they understand, as all of us understand, to serve the common good, the common man and woman. We make these prayers in your name. Amen. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. Our next regularly scheduled meeting of council will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. with public caucus prior at 5:45 p.m. If there is no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.